Let your agents to the black of the United States of America. To their honor, for which it stands, one nation under God, never is of injustice. Books?
Let him say how we just took it. Takes it out. Once every two years.
Okay, we will begin the meeting by, uh, um, starting with our election of board officers. So we'll start with the chair position. And then once the chair is elected, I will turn it over to whoever ends up being chair and then welcome the meeting for the rest of the evening. So do I have any nominations for chair?
Yes, I would like to nominate Jason Campbell.
Second.
I feel that he has done such an incredible job over the last two years. He always has the community and the children, children's education, for his whole people. It's very calm, very organized, very inclusive, so I nominate Jason Campbell.
Thank you. Any other nominations? Okay, this, uh, our policies require that, um, you have a written vote. So I ask that you fill out the card in front of you and pass it to your right. Steffi will count those and we'll let you know when we'll come.
I appreciate the color code. It's the luma.
It's official. It's all ours.
Oh, that's out of business.
Okay, all right, nominations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We were so glad.
So, uh, all right, uh, do we have any nominations, uh, for vice chair?
Yes, uh, thank you. I'd like to, uh, Mr. Trump, I'd like to nominate Anna James as vice chair of board. Uh, she has done an exemplary job as vice chair in the past. She also puts children first and she brings a wealth of experience to our board in, in the education sphere and I'm grateful for her presence. Thank you.
Second. Uh, any other nominations? All right, please vote.
It's the other one.
Thank you, Sandra. Next, uh, do we have any nominations for treasurer? Oh, wait, that's another word, secretary. No, no, uh.
Yeah, I'm for chair, uh, secretary.
Secretary, I would like to nominate Gabe and Lush. Active secretary. Any other nominations? All right, just vote for, uh, go pick one.
All right.
Sure, we can find out if people know this very first names.
I love this, it's very, real big, very funny.
Uh, yeah, there you go. That side's got to kill.
Didn't help me when I dropped on the end of the honor.
Surely, it's a goal.
And, uh, do we have any nominations for treasurer? I'd like to nominate Susan Bolliano, who has, uh, served in an incredible capacity with building committee and I hope that she will keep doing numbers and thank you for hopefully wearing another hat today. Say a second or any other nomination? Thank you. Second, any other nominations? All right. All right, great. Nice, funny, that's one of the, one of the things the state law says we have to do on paper, paper bill. Um, so we have our officers, thank you, welcome to all the new members here. And we will move on, uh, the first item, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, which, uh, includes two minutes. So moved. Second. All right, uh, any discussion, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, um, we'll move on to a report from the student representatives.
I'm ready to sign, yes. All right, so for the preschool, November was a busy month. We celebrated Veterans Day with a walking trip to the town hall and made thankful turkeys with our middle school buddies and welcomed families for our annual stone soup celebration. In December, we will be learning about family, our five senses and gingerbread. Later this month, we will look forward to welcoming families back later this month for celebration of family. We are also excited to participate in PJ Day for the kids, a fundraiser for Connecticut Children's Cancer Hospital and to have the high school choir perform at the center school on December 22nd. This month, we will focus on the letters J, K and L and the A, A, B, B pattern and numbers one through seven. Our artist of the month is Helen, sorry, our color is green and our chief is bright pink. At the elementary school, in November, both elementary schools honor veterans with an assembly on Veterans Day. Students receive report cards and parent teacher conferences for help. Our PTOs sponsored successful book players at both schools and we are looking forward to participating in the statewide PJ Day on December 12th in order to raise money for children fighting cancer at Connecticut Children's Hospital. At Mile Creek, the first education of the Wildcat Times, for, the first edition of the Wildcat Times for the school year was published. Students in grade three participated in an onsite program with Bushy Hill to learn more about the indigenous people of Petkin. At line consolidated, our student leaders collected four full bins of non-parishable foods items that we delivered to the shoreline food pantry before Thanksgiving. We are gearing up for the, a big kindness initiative that the student leaders will roll out at the town meeting this Friday. November was a very busy month at the middle school. Our eighth graders met Mr. Kendrick Moore, a motivational and personal coach who focused on the theme, words matter. This was the first session in a two-part series centered on empathy, bias and the impact of our words and how they affect others. Our sixth graders continue with our new program, middle school 101, which supports the development of executive functioning skills. Recent lessons included email etiquette, following directions, effectively using a planner or agenda and strategies for handling missing work. Our PTO also sponsored the annual adult dodgeball tournament, bringing together members from all five communities for a fun and energetic evening. On Monday and Tuesday before Thanksgiving, we held our parent teacher conferences, providing families with the opportunity to connect and communicate with all of our teachers. Thanksgiving break offered a much-needed rest as we entered the final few weeks leading up to our winter process. For the high school, the student council recently hosted a successful blood drive with the American Red Cross. Thank you to everyone who donated. Before break, we wrapped up our volleyball season with an exciting apple school tournament and the high school would also like to welcome our new board of education members. Looking ahead, our holiday toy drive runs from December 1st to 12th with the festive wreath on display in the comments. PJ Day for the kids is on December 12th. Holiday spirit week runs from December 15th to 23rd and will end the festivities with our holiday symbol on 23rd. The library has launched a new book club meeting noises at 7:00 AM. Our green team kicked off its composing, uh, composting campaign and collected 575 pounds of food during the annual Thanksgiving drive to help local families. For seniors, college applications are officially in, now we wait. Finally, we'll enjoy the holiday band concert on December 11th, the choral concert on December 17th and wrap up the season with our winter carnival on September 17th. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, is there any public comment? There's no one on Zoom. It's okay. So we will move on to, uh, correspondence. Um, we have one email for the past month, uh, oh, and that was, um, excuse me, Michelle Grethel, um, emailing on behalf of homeowners in the library lane area, um, about wetland species management and, uh, inquiring about whether the school, um, could, uh, play a role in what they're trying to do in their neighborhood because their wetlands cross into the school property. All right, we'll move on, um, should administer a report, I don't know, the superintendent's report. Okay, so we will begin if, uh, again, just for the new people, if you click at those, all those links below, I'm going to go through each one of those. So we'll start with the personnel report. Take a look at that, not much to report, uh, this month. We have a number of vacancies, most are due to maternity leaves. We have a long-term sub need in kindergarten and in second grade. Um, uh, that custodian at center school position, we actually just filled yesterday, um, that just wasn't updated because Paige is on vacation this week. Um, so we did also hire a custodian in Mile Creek, uh, and unfortunately did have to, uh, separate employment to employees, uh, due to health reasons. Any questions on the personnel report? Okay. Uh, we will move on to, I'll just come back to the budget process timeline, we'll move on, this is a bit out of order here, but we've covered the enrollment report. Um, not a lot of change, we're down two students, uh, this month at 1,252 students and our percentages remain relatively the same at 82.6 and O'Line at 17.4 in line. Number of, uh, tuition students remains the same at 17 students. Questions on that? Okay. And then our goals, uh, for this month, or for this year, I should say, our curriculum goal is to responsibly leverage artificial intelligence tools to enhance teaching, learning and operational efficiency while fostering critical thinking, creativity and ethical awareness. Um, in November, we solicited staff feedback on both the student and staff AI documents, which if you recall, Michelle had shared with you, I think back in August, maybe? I think it was about August or September. And she responded to a number of questions that were raised by people and I also had an opportunity to attend, uh, at the Cape Caps convention, a present, AI presentation. Uh, Michael and I went to, to see that, um, which is actually someone who had presented here previously at Mervis, which was very informative. Um, so we are continuing, continuing to look at that and, um, determine, you know, how we can use it effectively and appropriately. In terms of human resources, no new updates, we're continuing to use the new rubric for our goals, observations and feedback, um, so that has not changed since last month. Our community goal of, uh, is to essentially use Parent Square to streamline our communication. And I reported last month that we did use, uh, did to send report cards home via Parent Square at the high school. This month, we are trying to coordinate the use, it actually has a, um, an option in there to use permission slips. So instead of sending over the permission slip, you can actually have it, uh, you know, electronically with a parent inside permission slip. So we haven't done that yet, but we're hoping to do that this month. And we're also looking at shifting, right now, we have a different program for payment options. If you want to pay for your kid's lunch, you use my school bucks, things like that. Parent Square has an option for payment options, so we're again, trying to bring it all under one program, so we only have to pay for one program. So hopefully you could get rid of my school bucks, but that's still kind of in its infancy. So we are looking at those additional uses. Uh, in terms of facilities, this goal was about construction and minimizing classroom disruption and making sure that we stick to a budget and a five-year plan. Uh, so we are working, Susan will talk more about this later when she does her report, but we are working towards substantial completion of the HVAC projects. Um, we're hoping that comes sometime in December, that's when it's expected. A couple of hurdles that we're trying to get through, but hopefully some of those will resolve today when we met this afternoon with, um, both the construction management team and the design team in our weekly, uh, board's meeting. And if everything goes as planned, we should be moving into the new addition of Mile Creek in January, um, so, uh, probably will be right after the vacation. And if you have been to Mile Creek lately, you saw that we did add new directional signs in the parking lot, uh, to add level of safety there, which was a strong push for many of our parents and I think has made, uh, quite a difference in terms of just making sure that people are safe while the kids are walking around the parking lot. Sustainability, you heard from Bella's report that all of our schools are now composting lunch food scraps. We thought the high school was going to be a little iffy, but it's actually turned out great. Uh, Mr. Bush, that will show me that today when I was out there during lunch and seems to be going very well. So, uh, we are doing that at all schools, uh, including Mile Creek where, you know, we still have construction or cleaning in classrooms, but they are still, uh, able to do the composting. And then our board of education goal, um, I actually did not add this in, but I should add this in. We did have four members attend the Cape Caps con, uh, convention, but I should also put in there that everybody was able to attend the new board of ed, uh, workshop as well. Um, that happened earlier with one of our attorneys, so hopefully that was informative for everybody. And, uh, again, I know Anna had shared last month that she attended a webinar and there are a lot of opportunities to be at CADE.
I did as well.
Was it the AI, social media? Align it to the list.
Please.
All right. Any questions on the goals? Okay, and then finally, just, this is more of a reminder in terms of your schedule, uh, and again, for our new board members, just keep in mind that in January, we have a meeting every Wednesday. The first Wednesday is our regular board event meeting. We try and keep that one a little bit shorter, uh, just because we don't, we have three other meetings potentially. The second meeting will be the first budget workshop where the elementary schools, the middle school, the high school and Michelle will present their budgets. And then the following week, all of you present the remainder of the budget. And then if we need a third meeting, which some years we have had to discuss the budget, um, in fact, I think we did last year, uh, we will hold that meeting. But if we don't have any additional need to discuss, we don't hold that meeting. Um, and then the rest of it is, uh, is it kind of aligned with board of education meetings. So I just wanted to make sure you have a copy of that so you know where you need to be for the next few months. Any questions? You're welcome to come to the others, but no, you don't need to.
We don't recommend.
Good question, yeah, very good question.
Yes.
What, uh, what are going to be the next steps with composting? Does it, I don't have the details in mind.
Toasted.
Uh, the next steps, well, uh, we, in the initial discussions that Ron and I had with the company that we're working with now, they had offered to provide us with compost. And one of the things we talked about is actually using that compost to grow food here. We're not there yet, I want anybody to think next month, I'm going to come back and say we're growing food, you know, but we just, as you remember, we did a greenhouse a couple of years ago, so there is an opportunity to do that, whether the food ends up in the cafeteria or being given to the, uh, food share program. Uh, we haven't, you know, worked out all those details, but that's the hope that at some point, gets to the point where we're producing, we wouldn't get all of our compost back, but enough to be able to do something like that. They even offered to build raised beds for us, which Mr. Ross already built for us. How does it feel like to you, uh, conversing at the high school? Have you noticed this?
Super easy and yes, right by the food, like where we all walk over, so it's not like anyone is seeing it. So I feel like that's very helpful and big splendid task for understanding.
And with that, we move on to the business management report.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good evening, everyone. Um, so tonight's update is actually very similar to last month, uh, speaking again to special education, that, um, as you can see, that is well above, uh, where we were at this point in time last year and that is due to unexpected student needs. Uh, as I said last month, we will keep a close eye on that and determine if we've got to, um, consider any potential spending restrictions district-wide to kind of recover, um, some of that overage as well, plan operation and maintenance. Again, same thing as last month, due to the amount of time you have to cap a project work as well as payments versus last year. Additionally, a couple of other things to draw your attention to, um, instructional programs is down. Um, that, there's really not one major thing that sticks out to that, it's really just a differential across many different accounts for that. Um, different support services, uh, as a reminder to those who were here last year, you know, we're way down to last year, if you recall, last year, we were contracting with a nurse, um, agency who's providing a nurse for us because we had one of our nurses out on a long-term medical leave, so, uh, we're, we're probably more in line with where we would typically be, uh, at this point in time in that. And then with administrative services, we are also down significantly, but that is due to, at this point in time last year, we didn't purchase a server that was worth, um, the cost was $60,000 and we didn't make that purchase this year. So, again, nothing, uh, nothing that really sticks out in those line items. Um, again, we keep an eye on special education, uh, and see if that's going to impact the rest of the district and I'm going to take a deeper dive on that in the next week or so to see where we stand with that. Um, revenue, we, from O'Line is $11,921,011 from Line, $2,633,179 and that's of course through November 30th. Any questions on the executive budget summary?
Just with this, with the special ed drivers, is that kind of, is it a, a, a small number of students with high needs or is this just sort of a groundswell of like lots of kids need support and so it's adding?
Well, there's been some unexpected, um, move-ins, so that is like the bigger piece of it. I don't think there's, you know, and Melissa could speak better to this, I don't think there's anyone in district that all of a sudden, you know, needed something. It's, it's really unexpected exterior. Any other questions on the executive budget summary? Sorry, I gotta put my desk right back in. All right, contingency. Uh, we had $11,402 in new spending. This amount is an estimate to replace, um, a failing safety mechanism, a backflow preventer here in center school. So again, that's just an estimate, things will, you know, it could come in a little higher, it could come in a little lower based on, uh, what work needs to be done, but the existing balance as everything stands, uh, from that account is $146,922. Any questions on contingency? Some of this stuff will make a little more sense in probably 15 minutes or so. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. And with that, as I just alluded, move on to the educational presentation.
Do you want to hit the button?
If you hit the forward one, it'll go forward.
Yep, okay. All right, uh, good evening, everyone, specifically our new board members. This is really for your benefit, but a refresher for our existing board members. Melissa and I, every couple of years when we see the new board, like to do a quick and kind of dirty budgeting 101 because as Ian indicated, January gets really busy for us and you dive right into the budgeting process for the following year. So I'm going to give kind of the higher level budget looksee and then Melissa is going to speak a little more specifically to just special education because as you just heard, that is a major driver in our budget. So, here we go. Yeah. Dylan.
Trying. Maybe we're too far away.
Where do I have to go?
I know, that's pretty close.
I was hitting one on the right, is that?
Yeah.
Is it on, is it on? I said, maybe that's what I. What did I, now we're talking to our friends, yeah?
All right.
Okay, so there are three sources of public school funding. We've got our local money, so our property taxes and local revenues that come in. We also have federal money, those are our grants and entitlements, IDEA specifically, which is special education, um, and then our other entitlements, which, uh, we'll get into a little bit more as we move along. And then of course, we have our state money, which is any state agent grants, ECS, which we'll talk about, excess costs, which we're definitely going to talk about, and then, um, the HBAC, our security grants, which are specialized grants that kind of pop up every now and then. But if you recall, we have a massive HBAC grant that's going to help offset our building projects, so. So grants, here we are. So the state grants, we have ECS, ECS stands for education cost sharing. Um, that is basically a really complicated formula that nobody in the state really understands, but it's based upon need and demographic of the towns that you're in. So in this year 25, we received about 1.4 million and that's between both towns, that's a combined amount because they do it per town. Um, and we're slated to receive next year about 1.8 million. Now, just as a comparison, um, this number has been up and down over the years. They did a major reduction years ago and the last time we did this presentation, our total amount was only 689,000. So it's great, it's going up. Um, I think they reconfigured it a bit and that's, this is where we're at. So we're looking at 1.8, which is, is nice. And those monies, they go to the towns and they have to be used to pay for education. Excess costs, that is related to special education, it's very complicated, um, and we are going to get, but, but I can explain that one, um, and I will speak to more on that in just a little bit. And then we have our federal grant programs, which is our entitlements, titles, IDEA, et cetera. Um, we have title one, title two, three, four, and then IDEA. I'm not going to read to you because you're all capable of doing that, but you can see how much we receive, some of them really aren't a lot. Um, and then our IDEA grant, of course, is, is a major one for us. These grants are supplement versus supplant, which means we cannot use those to cover existing programming. They've got to stand on their own, if you will. So, you know, for a situation and, and, you know, with our budget next year and someone's like, well, we have all this grant money, we should just, you know, reduce our budget and use our grant monies. By law, we cannot do that. All right?
Have a question?
Yes.
Sorry. Uh, so the, uh, the cost sharing, the ECS.
Yes.
Uh, you said that goes to the town, so that doesn't appear in our budget anywhere.
Correct.
That the town just uses that to help pay their portion to us.
Correct, we do, um, show a page for it though, um, in our budget book, on the revenue page, we do, we do show it there. An estimate and an actual, as we never know, because at any moment it could change, but, so we do an estimate for the budget and then the following year, we actually put in what our actual was for it. So that is on the revenue page, which is towards the end of the budget book.
Can I ask Holly about the federal grant programs? You say they can't supplant our average budget process.
Correct.
Let's say, for example, we wanted to train special ed teachers in sort of a, a new program, would that be something that this type of?
Depending on which grant it is, what the training is, et cetera, yes.
So, so it's something that you, an add-on that you want, it's not a salary, it's not a benefit, just go to that, but those.
Yeah, I mean, it can be used for some salaries. We, we use some of those grants for, to offset some of our IA salaries, our paraprofessional salaries, um, we are allowed to do that specifically, um, but depending on how the money's coming in, Michelle and Melissa manage these monies and they, there's kind of already a plan in place on what it's going to be used for. I mean, if you look at title three, it's, it's $4,400.
Right, I'm getting.
Right, we have a whole lot of that specifically, so. Okay? So if we go on to the ECS, excess costs, why? Oh.
I'm working now.
Here we are. All right, excess cost grant, again, I'm not going to read it to you, but there, it is by statute, um, and basically it is talking about how the state will help us fund, um, our special education students. Now, that sounds really great, except if you read the bullet there, it says in excess of four and one-half times a town's average cost per pupil. So they don't put in any money until we've already spent four and a half times the amount of what our average cost per pupil expenditure is. So, as an example, all hypothetical information here, except the first line, which this is from, this is our actual net current expenditure per pupil, $25,142, which means four and a half times that is $113,139. So we have to spend that on a special education. So we have to spend that on a special education student. It can be tuition, it can be transportation before, sorry, before the state will kick in any money to help cover that. And, and then it's not even 100%. It's usually around 70. It fluctuates a little bit, but 70 is, is usually a good number. So if we have an outplacement, including tuition and transportation, that costs $189,000, of that, we would have to spend $75,861 with the hopes of getting $53,103 back out of that.
And that doesn't come until following fiscal year, I remember, correct?
Yeah, yeah. It comes in two payments, too. One on October 1 and then?
Right.
Yeah, but I mean, there's still money coming in because we're getting last year, this year.
No, I got it.
But yeah, if we?
It's not real time, is it?
Right. For example, this year, you know, we have a lot of special educational needs, but any of the monies that we're filing for, right, we're not going to see until next year. So it's not going to necessarily help us offset the budget this year. All right? All right, so studying our budget guidelines and goals. Obviously, student achievement is what should be driving our budget process. Easy to say, obviously, there's always fiscal concerns in, in the towns, whether it's here or anywhere. But the goal is always student achievement. Obviously, we take great pride in our, our schools here, our students achieve because, you know, we, we do right by them. Budget decisions also should be in alignment with the strategic plan. I'm assuming that that was reviewed. I shouldn't assume anything, not assuming anything. And the decisions for budgeting, it's, it's really collaborative effort. You know, it starts with our budget workshop, which takes place the first, right before the first board meeting in November. And then it, it kind of filters out to the schools. The schools work with their department leaders to pull together their budgets. The administrators then pull it all together. Tomorrow, as a matter of fact, we're all going to be sitting down and going over the school budgets. And then, you know, we, we see what the whole roll-up is and, and then we come to you in January to present it. And as you said, you know, we get input from everybody. It starts with, you know, key stakeholders and then November being for those who are able to make it. There's Ian. The head budget guy. Oh, wait. I'm ready for that. I got it. Is that?
Yeah.
Is that the page we're on?
Yeah, I got it.
All right, thank you. All right. Not going to go through all these things, but if you notice on the executive budget summary that I just reviewed, it was all of these line items that were on that page. These are referred to as line items. Every expenditure that we have in the district falls under one of those categories. So that's really the, the headings that we operate in. Salaries, benefits, transportation, special education, debt service, which we're a little different from your typical district because we carry our own debt service. Administrative services, which has to do with basically the offices, the administrative offices. And there is, and support services, guidance, health, library, et cetera. So these are, you know, this, that's my, this is my daily life, basically. All right, now, this is where I think a lot of confusion lies because this, this deals a lot with maintenance. So we have, we'll say, three different areas of money to which we can tap to address maintenance concerns. I know that sounds like a lot, but there's a reason for all of it. So within our budget, we have our capital improvement budget. That's typically anywhere from $250,000 to $400,000, $450,000. That is budgeted for every year for specific projects. It could be the sound system in the high school. It could be underground storage tanks. It could be a roof. Things that we don't necessarily, we don't want to bond for. Certainly, we don't want to bond for. The dollar amounts are low enough where we can absorb it in that kind of placeholder that we use, the 250 to 450 for our budgeting amounts. And so these are things that have to be addressed, you know, ongoing. And we do have long-term capital project plan in place as well. Then we have the contingency, contingency budget, which is the second part that I reported on. That is a stagnant number. It stays at $200,000 every budget. And that is literally how it says, it is contingency. So any unexpected or unbudgeted expenses that should come forth. Things, well, like we just said, the backflow preventer. In the past, we've had to address some issues with the grinder pump. We upgraded some communications in the vestibules at the high school for security purposes. So things like that, things that needed to be done, they need to be done now, but they weren't necessarily budgeted for. Then, at the end of the year, when everything kind of shakes out, by law, the Board of Education is allowed to set aside 2% of the operating budget dollar amount into a sinking fund or the reserve fund or the undesignated fund. It's got a lot of names. That is monies that are outside of the budget, completely kept separately, that are used for, again, other items that we don't want to bond for, bigger projects. A maintenance building, for example, you know, if we need to replace our, our, our maintenance building. If we need to address, well, the field, the turf field was used out of the undesignated fund. Now, if you've been to a couple of meetings over the past few months, you'll know that we have created a policy around how this fund is funded and, and what it's planned for, so that everyone is on a safe page and understanding that the fund won't be used to, you know, if we have a, for some reason, a budget that is, makes people uncomfortable next year, we can't then just tap into the undesignated fund to lower that budget. So there is a policy in place for that. Everyone understands it and can move forward from that. So any questions on the maintenance monies structure? And probably not yet, but?
Actually, I do have one, yeah.
Yeah.
That $200,000 for the contingency maintenance budget, with, is that something that's fixed at 200 due to policy or is that a, like, historically it's been 200, so we keep it 200?
Historically, it's 200, so we keep it at 200.
Okay, so it's not, so there's nothing saying like as costs continue to go up, you know, 10, 20 years in the future, that number can go up?
Oh, it can always go up, yeah. It could al, it could always go down. That is just the number that has, yes, historically been used and, and fits comfortably with any needs that we've had. I can't, I've been here, this is my 12th year, and we've maybe once come close to expending it all. But it's nice to have because it's just never enough.
And that is part, that's a line item in the budget, right?
Correct, it falls in Ron's budget, yes. Ron being the facilities director. Okay. All right, so just a quick reference point. You're going to hear, the, the principals are going to present their budgets to you and they account for that little, what?
Can you just go back and just, we forgot to talk about the bill credit?
Oh, sorry. Sorry, the bill credit. So after money is associated to the undesignated fund, there's monies left over typically. And that money then is what is returned to the towns. It is returned to the towns as a bill credit in the following academic year. So we don't cut them a check. But when we create their invoices for what they need to pay for us monthly, which we do in May, once the budget passes, my, one of my team members and I sit down and we map out the entire year as far as like what payroll looks like, what debt service looks like, et cetera. And then we create kind of a year's invoice, if you will, for each town. And we utilize the credit to offset those expenditures in the following year. But it's, it's, the credit is two years in arrears. For example, you know, 24, 25 just closed, but we didn't use what was left over from that to offset 25, 26 because 24, 25 wasn't done when the 25, 26 budget was created. So whatever's left from 24, 25 will offset the 26, 27 bills to the towns. Okay? Sorry, thank you, Ian. All right, there we go. A little sliver, that's the schools. That's curriculum, the schools, et cetera. The big green part is everything else. All the district wide services, maintenance, special education. That also includes all of the salaries, so.
Critically, that is.
Yeah, I was going to say.
The salaries are not in the elementary, in the last?
Correct, our, our administrators do not budget for their salaries in, in their budgets. I actually, my, my office actually handles the budgeting for all the salaries. So while they're going to give wonderful presentations and obviously very important because what they're doing is impacting children at every moment, it's, it's a very small piece of the overall pie. And there's this nice paragraph as well, showing how much salaries we are, as Ian would say, we don't make widgets, we are in the people business. And so salaries and benefits is going to be our biggest items. All right, so once you start to hear about the budget, then you gotta have to go out and sell it to folks, right? You're going to be at the store, someone's going to want to talk to you about it. It's important to remember that once the board votes on the budget, it is therefore the board's budget. So at that point in time, everybody needs to be on the same page. The messaging needs to be consistent and everybody needs to own it as their own budget. So you gotta know who you're talking to, though. I use the example, like if you go to the senior center to talk to folks, your, your delivery to them is going to be a little bit different than what it might be to like a, to a sports team or to park and rec because there's different things that interest different people. So you want to know your audience, you want to know what's important to them and you need to, you, you want to be educated on what we are asking for and why. And certainly, if there are any questions that you don't feel comfortable answering, tell them, hey, I'll get back to you, right? You guys, sometimes you ask me questions, I'll be like, I don't know, I'll get back to you. Refer them to me if you'd like to or reach out to me. We can provide the answers that you need so that you can close that move with whoever is asking. And then how do we communicate? You know, the people in our town should not be hearing about what we're doing at our schools in February, March, and April. So we really try to do a, a good job of making sure that folks know what our student achievements are year-round, whether it's athletics, whether it's music-related, whether it's art, any of our extracurriculars, et cetera. Because it's important to keep that messaging out there so that they know that their dollars are being wisely spent in the success of our students and their achievements in special education. So that's year-round. Here's our timeline, I think Ian talked about it a little bit. Come January, every week, we're going to be spending together. Come February, we have our budget forum and then hopefully the adoption of the budget. March, I'll get that budget book ready and we put out the Focus on Education, which delivers information about the budget to everybody in town. April, Ian and I are going to roadshow up to the Boards of Finance and any other community groups that are interested in hearing about the budget or want to come in, another budget hearing. We let folks know when the budget is, where it is, et cetera. In May, we have our mother hearing and then we have our referendum. And then hopefully, if history holds, we pass on the first bill. So, any questions for me before I turn it over to Melissa? Oops, oh, oh. I hit the button.
Yeah, just give it.
Yep.
All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Melissa Doperty. I'm the Director of Special Services. And I have several slides to share with you regarding understanding the special education costs and really talking about what creates some of the variability that you see in the special education budget. So when you see the special education budget, there are some areas that remain very predictable and constant. So what we budget for supplies, what we budget for different dues. And then also our professional development is another area. So we really plan well with those amounts and that tends to be very constant. Where you will often see variables are in the public tuition, the private tuition. Those two lines also now, because of the way that billing is done, will impact the purchase services line, the special education office. Special education therapy evaluation line item can also be impacted and also transportation. What can, now I got some fancy things going on here. What can cause the variability? Well, first of all, we have an obligation to educate all students in what is considered their least restrictive environment. We work very hard to maintain students here in district as their least restrictive environment. But sometimes we do have to create an educational plan for them that requires more services or supports than we're able to give them. The individuals with disabilities act, of course, governs a lot of what we, all of what we do. And the education of all having have children act in 2025. So there are times when the district recommends an out-of-district placement to meet a student's needs. We, the team develops an IEP and recognizes that the needs have become so great that we really can't provide those services here. We work really hard. I, I stay in very close contact with the building administrators. I'm involved in PBT meetings. I'm involved in, you know, meeting with teams about what's happening with students. And I work very hard to try to predict what we may require in the upcoming year. However, it is very early in the summer year. We don't always know what's going to happen, but we do our best. Students who move into the district and were previously outplaced by a sending district, we really do need to maintain that placement and the IEP, as it's been written. So that is often a factor that we, of course, cannot predict and have, can happen often. DCF involvement, there are times when students are involved with DCF. DCF may place them in a foster placement that is farther away, which requires then students to enter into the public school district in that town. And the school district is responsible for paying for the education in that public school. That is also something that can be very unpredictable, but it's an obligation that we have to fulfill. What we call unilateral placements, when parents make the decision to place their students and then are requesting that parent, that district's pay for that tuition. Parent requests for what are considered independent educational evaluations. Under IDA, if a parent is not in agreement with the evaluations that have been conducted by the school district, they have a right to what's called an IDE or an independent educational evaluation. And the district has a couple of choices there. They can grant that evaluation, which again is potentially an unexpected cost. If we decide that we'd like to stand behind our evaluations, we would then file for due process, which again is an unexpected cost. Additional supports and evaluations that are required for educational programming. There are times when we've conducted very comprehensive evaluations but feel that we really need more information in order to truly understand how to program and support a student. And so we may make that recommendation. There are times when a parent may make a request and, and we grant that request based on the specific needs of the student. Enrollment in magnet or the VoAG schools. If a student is special education enrolled and enrolls in a magnet program or a VoAG school, there are costs for their services that are associated with, with attending those schools. And then we are seeing an increase in our multi-language learner students and evaluations that they may require if we suspect that there's a disability. We do not have bilingual evaluators and we, it can be difficult to find evaluators that speak some of the languages. So that can be a cost that we incur because we have to ensure that they're being assessed in their native language. Okay, this is a chart of just some out-of-district placement examples. These are placements that we have either utilized in the past, maybe utilizing currently. But these are kind of the, this gives you an idea of the costs that become associated with out-of-district placements. So we have a collaborative academy as an example, is a district placement that is actually here in Old Line now. They opened up about two years ago. Waterbury Country School, you'll see a daily rate there. That's because that is a school that's utilized by DCF. So the state actually regulates what they can charge for tuition. Attlebrook is a very specific school for students with autism. Cedarhurst is a school actually through Yale, New Haven. And that is a school that supports students that may have some mental health challenges and needs. Learn is our area rest. That's really actually considered a public school. And Learn has a variety of programs that we really try hard to tap into and, and have our students attend. Along with all of those tuition comes the cost of transportation. And the cost of transportation is really becoming astronomical lately. I mean, the state is talking a lot about figuring out a way to manage the cost of tuition, but I'm finding that the cost of transportation is often really what's sort of pushing us over the edge. And then as an example that I shared with a DCF student, a public school cost is usually around $25,000, but can be more depending on where the school is located. Any questions of what you see there?
When you say a public school, are you talking about another school district?
So, correct. So as an example, if, let's say, a student, DCF places a student with an IEP up in, I don't know, Waterbury. That's too far for us to transport and have that student come back to Old Line for school every day. So they would attend a school in Waterbury, but Waterbury would charge us a tuition. Waterbury, but Waterbury would charge us a tuition for the services that the student is receiving.
So in other words, the the other public school district has a program that's suitable for that student?
Doesn't necessarily have to be a program, it's that the student requires an education, but we're not gonna transport a student two hours one way to come to school, so they would enter Waterbury Public Schools, but we pay a fee to Waterbury
I see.
For that service.
DCF is making the decision.
That's, yeah, that's a DCF decision, right. And then, this is just an example of that line, budget line item, special education therapy and evaluation. Um, there have been professional behavioral supports that we have engaged in and trying to help to support really keeping students here in district. The cost, the last time that we engaged with that agency was a hundred and eight thousand dollars a year. So although it continues to be expensive, it still is less of a cost than an out-of-district placement. Um, independent educational evaluations, depending on the scope of the evaluation, the participation of the evaluator in a PPT, is usually around eight thousand dollars. And then, district level evaluation requests, and any consultation is running usually around two hundred and forty-five dollars an hour when we're consulting with experts. Any questions there?
The behavioral supports, is that for behavior tech, BCBA, or is that?
Well, it's, it's, it can be behavior techs with an oversight of a BCBA, um, yeah. But it's, it's typically for students who may be demonstrating behaviors that are kind of beyond the scope of the expertise of our supports that we have. Okay, some other resources to support continued placement in Region 18. Of course, we believe that this is the best place for our students, we want them to remain in our community as much as possible, um and we really work very hard to put supports in place for our students um in order to do that. So, we have special education teachers and related services staff with specific certifications and and um levels of expertise. We do have a self-contained classroom at Mile Creek School, we have had one at the middle school in the past, there isn't a need for it now, but there may be in the future. Um, we have our alternative high school program, um, the Independent Cooperative Educational Experience, which is actually here in um Center School, and we often use the IC program as a support in place for students who may have challenges in managing that larger school environment, not typically behaviorally, but often um because of just, you know, a variety of reasons, so they will um participate in IC or share time with IC and the high school. Um, we have the Transition Academy Program, and that's a shared program with Old Saver Public Schools for our eighteen to twenty-two-year-olds. That started about five years ago, it's been, it's developed into a really robust program. Um, Old Saver provides us with the teacher, we provide um the classroom and the space, our own instructional assistance, and um I think there are fifteen or seventeen students in that program now. Um, we have found that that has really solved a lot, a lot of concerns with parents of our students that age, because sometimes we only had one or two students, and it can be very difficult to develop a program around one student. Um, and so, that's been a wonderful, wonderful way of maintaining students here in the district. We have our own district board certified behavior analyst, uh we do have behavioral tutors in in different places throughout the district as needed. Our instructional assistants are available for students as determined necessary per a PPT or the IEP. Um, evaluation and consultation, as I shared with outside experts, and then also um in-district services from outside experts that are providing direct supports to students at times. Um, so we work, we we really work to try and keep students here, um but even with some of these supports, it can be um difficult to maintain a student, we have to recognize when we're not meeting their needs, and we have to be careful that we're not creating a singular program for a student that can be even more restrictive than an out-of-district placement because they can essentially be alone throughout the day. So, um, there's a lot to consider. Any questions there that anyone has?
I see, this is the.
Uh, um, individualized cooperative educational uh
Experience.
Experience.
And what you were saying about that um being an effective way of not having just one student, what you meant was the collaboration with Old Saver, that there are more students?
So the Transition Academy, right. So, because we are a small district
Oh, right, there's the transition.
Yeah, and it's, it can be actually throughout other, you know, other supports too, we're a small district, and so sometimes we may only have one student for one year moving into that eighteen to twenty-two-year-old program.
Right.
And that's very isolating for a student. So that, the the program has allowed us to have more students for a number of years.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, yeah. Any other questions?
I heard, I'm gonna emphasize that one acronym that went past me, and you've said it actually, BCB, is that?
BCBA, Board Certified Behavior Analyst.
Got it.
Awesome, that's awesome. It doesn't have to be, yeah, it doesn't have to be.
It started there, I think, if I remember.
It's often associated with autism, yeah. So, the the, the, really, the responsibility of a BCBA, for sure, is um, the BCBA will often do what we call functional behavioral assessment, when a student may be experiencing some behavioral challenges, determine sort of the the cause of those behaviors, and develop a behavior plan to try to support reshaping behaviors and and helping that student be more successful.
Thanks.
Okay, so the next slide is just kind of a sample of what can possibly happen. So, the top, I just have letters for students in schools because we really can't, you know, put any identifying information there, but this is an example. So, I may have developed the budget in, you know, at this time of the year, and these are the students that we are predicting will be requiring um a specific out-of-district placement, the transportation cost that goes along with that, and then the total cost. We may have student C who were saying, you know what, this student requires some additional outside supports, so we're gonna have that put in place, and then we know that we have student D who may need an additional evaluation that year. So the projected budget that I might have shared was five hundred and twenty-five thousand and fifty dollars for um the special education tuition and transportation. But then what happens is, throughout the school year, in the summer, at any time, we have students who may move in, or students whose behavior may have shifted in a way that we no longer feel that we can manage. And so we end up with some additional costs. Um, and so, I just kinda wanna point your attention to that student F. The reason why there's two separate costs in transportation is that there are times when a student's behavior is not safe on transportation, and so we have to have an additional help provide with them to inform school, so that's an additional cost. Or we may have a student who has a medical need that requires medical support during the transportation, and so you're paying for the transportation, but you're also paying for that additional support for the student, and that can also drive up some costs. Um, and I just wanna mention, I brought in, you know, student G because we do have requirements on Merribe Can Evento, which is really the the homeless act for students. And um, sometimes it can work in our, to our advantage, we don't want students to be homeless, however, if that happens, there's a shared cost in transportation with the, with the town in which the student is currently living. Um, and that, but we can also incur costs if students move here, um, and so then we're helping to pay for their transportation back to their home school. And so what happens to the budget is it increases to, as in this example, a little over a million dollars. So it's, it can be very unexpected. And some years, we have had situations where we've had one student outplaced, and that student has moved, and then we don't have a cost for a period of time. Other times, we predict that we're gonna have four or five students outplaced, and then four or five students can move in. So, we, we just do our best to try to manage that. Any questions that you have?
I was just curious about with Medicaid billing and what kind of costs are you operating from that?
Yeah, I apologize, I meant to cover that.
Yeah.
Um, so in twenty-four, so, for those who don't know, Medicaid um is basically a reimbursement that um we could potentially receive uh for some of the services that are provided to um our special education students. Um, not all students, because the parents do have to sign a waiver in order for us to claim some of those expenses. Um, so, just, last year, twenty-four, twenty-five, we received just about forty-two thousand dollars in Medicaid reimbursements. Um, we offset those monies against um one of our special education purchase service accounts because those costs, the costs are related, are related to related services. So we don't receive a lot of Medicaid money um for various reasons, but that is, that is where that stands.
Do you know, in terms of your compliance with billing, if people are consistently submitting for those things?
We are consistently, yes. That is something that one of my, actually, my secretaries manages on a monthly basis, she checks, she ensures that people are are billing. Um, we work real hard to gain parent consent, not all parents would like to choose to give consent, so we do have a number of students that we were not able to receive consent for. Um, and then sometimes we also have shifts and they were receiving our related services. So as I said, for Medicaid billing, you can only bill for services like occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech and language counseling, if a BCBA is working directly with a student, um and for evaluations. But if those, if a student exits from any of those services, then we're also no longer billing for those services. But we work very hard to maintain, um, yeah, because it's, it's definitely a value to the district. Um, but it is an added, it's an added um responsibility of our related services staff, so it's a little, it's a little cumbersome, but the state may, it used to be that you could choose to engage in Medicaid if you had a certain number of students, and several years ago, the school changed it to if you were over one thousand students, you are now required to bill for Medicaid.
The state keeps fifty percent? The state keeps some, but, so, we're doing all the work and, yeah, they're keeping.
Right, and it doesn't impact a family's um ability to, it doesn't impact their um insurance that's available to them, um, but it is just that a help to districts, so. Yeah. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. We'll move on to uh sharing committee reports. Um, we can start with the policy communications. I don't know if I wanna do the policy.
This month, we only have one policy, that's administration of patients, and thankfully, there's now a nasal spray that most people use instead of that, that we can then have to literally inject the child. So now, either staff or the child has, you have permission to have now that nasal spray, which is called Purchase Happy. So that's going to be at the beginning of the policy. In addition, we have some training for staff and for us.
And Laura was our communications, lady chair, uh, and she left, I think, gave them the new communications, I don't know if you wanna.
Sure, I'll give it a try. Nobody can do it like Laura. Um, so, uh, the, mainly in communications, we are focusing on Focus on Ed, uh, and the newsletter that comes out now three times a year, not four times a year, um, you'll see it coming out in about three weeks, it has some new colors, some new branding. It's uh three pages instead of just two, or rather of like a trifle. And so, uh, mainly, it'll be coming out in three weeks, it'll be, she, I believe she put it out a couple of weeks so that she could get some of the fall activities in, and the board members, a little future, I believe. And um, most importantly, we lost that the audience to say that there will be a lower cost associated with the new design. And uh, then furthermore, uh, she will be uh, Mrs. Campanio will be looking for more opportunities to do some social media engagement, video engagement, or general communications with the community. And she's looking at some digital brochures for the middle school and elementary school, kind of like the high school does with its school program. So, always getting the word out in all of the ways that we're trying to feed information to people who are busy, parents often who don't read, the seven different ways we are being communicated with in the first place.
I thought of that when uh Hollis gave her her presentation, it's just like she was talking about, I mean, everybody in the community, parent or not, should know what their tax dollars are going towards and what's happening in our schools.
Yeah.
Yeah. Alright, thank you. And um, Susan, you wanna take, no, wait, did we have a decision in Chinese? No, we haven't.
No, they haven't.
We didn't have one today, yeah. So we don't need to do that, and then, so Susan, three K, three A.
Okay, um, as I had said to you in the email prior, um, we did not have a meeting with the construction firm last Wednesday, as you might expect, for obvious reasons. Um, and as a result, there was a lot to report this afternoon, so I quickly went home and typed it up, and it will be in the minutes, but I'm gonna, I'm giving you all a written copy, the old-fashioned way. Um, at Mile Creek School, we are still on target to turn over the addition, the new addition for occupancy during the holiday break. The classroom doors are actually being hung there next week. Uh, the superintendent, Ian, Kelly, Enoch, the school principal, Ron Turner, and Brian Dow, who is Ron's uh assistant on facilities, met with the construction foreman at Mile Creek to discuss completion of three classrooms in the existing part of the building. So some, also in the same timeframe as we're moving into the addition, we're going to be changing the phases at Mile Creek so that some folks are moving out of existing classrooms into different classrooms so they can do work in various portions of the building. So they're shifting things around, and that's gonna be continuing throughout the, the course of the project until every single section is completed. That's the downside of being in an occupied building when we're trying to do this kind of work. Um, there was some good news that the site work um on the project is complete enough that they're going to feel that the town's swan, these people are gonna be able, in Old Line will be able to sign off on the original zoning permit, which is lovely. Um, recently, the Old Line Fire Marshal, David Berge, went through Mile Creek and is, is asking now for some additional signage, so that when the entire building is complete with the fire sprinkler systems and all the fire prevention stuff, that there'll be an easy, easily identifiable way through signage for the, for the emergency crew to be able to go in there and identify, or something's on fire, what is it, how do I shut it, what can I shut off? So it, it, he wants it to be very clear, which I appreciate. Um, Center School this weekend, they are going to complete the flooring work in the vestibule, and most, as you can see, most of the tile grids are, ceiling tile grids are up. Um, the hardwood floors on the stage here, even though the stage is not used that frequently, the gym and the stage area are used for high school wrestling practice. And even though the stage itself was not part of the renovate, HVAC renovation, actually there was equipment underneath it. So there was damage to those floors that needed to be fixed before the wrestling practice starts. Um, and as always, completion of the HVAC, all of the HVAC punchless continues to be top priority in all of the three HVAC schools. The middle school, uh, again, flooring and carpet uh upgrades and repairs in areas that were disrupted, particularly around the vestibule, that's gonna be occurring uh in the next week or so. Similarly, but most of the ceiling tiles are back in the main corridors. Um, the biggest issues at both um middle school and center school have, are related to the new burners and boilers. We've had, since they, essentially, especially at the middle school, they drained all the water and lycra out of the systems when they had to replace parts of the unit. Now that they put it back in, there's, there's a bunch of different things that have been happening that have been causing, and and I'm sure even, even at the high school, they may be feeling this, because there's some portions of the high school that are heated by the middle school boilers, as well as center school. So, we've got a situation where um things continue, occasionally the burners seem to be shutting down, and they, and they're trying to troubleshoot why. And in one particular case this afternoon, they think they discovered at the middle, at the middle school campus, at the main campus in particular, that the building management system, the computer, computerized management system had been adjusted, the boiler set point temperature hadn't been adjusted on that system to match the new design. So it wasn't heating up the water enough. So there's all sorts of little glitchy things like that that are happening. Uh, I can tell you, for example, when line consolidates burner, new burner shut down for some reason on the weekend, downs was there, and by Monday morning, there was heat again. So, they are responding, but it's frustrating, and it's, if, if we find a cold classroom, they try to address it as quickly as possible. But if you hear anything, please do tell, and we'll see what we, we can do, but they're trying to respond in real time. Um, every Wednesday, even when, even if I have to dial in, I try to attend the owners' meeting, as does Alan Sheinis, who is a representative from the Building Committee in Line, every week. And we are sitting on them, I guess you could say, in as much as we don't And we are sitting on them, I guess you could say, in as much as we don't, if they say something's that it costs more, we don't say, oh, sure, just write a check. Where they are saying, why is this happening? Please justify yourself. And what is, is there a better alternative, a cheaper alternative, a more sensible course of action? And I believe, I think, even though it's causing Ian, I'm sure, a lack of sleep sometimes, and Ron and Brian are working their tails off, trying to keep up with all the little things that are going on, scheduling the work and all of that, I think it's working. I think the management of the, of the construction is going as well as could be expected for occupied buildings. And once again, I encourage you to bring in your questions or anybody, any member of the public, and we will be glad to answer them.
Thank you. Can I ask a clarifying question on the Mile Creek one? Am I correct in, because you're mentioning the classroom moves, the idea is?
Yes.
Is no teacher will have more than once, right? So they're clarifying on classrooms. Once they're in those rooms, they're in those rooms.
Yeah.
We're still hoping to stick to that, so that should be working out.
And the folks that will visit the addition are not moving again?
Right.
Correct. So, yeah, I did, and Kelly, I also worked overtime and Sean Kennedy to try to make this as seamless as possible. Everyone is working very hard, and I'm appreciative, but it's a lot. There's a lot going on, and I know it impacts all the buildings in some way or another.
Great. And Scott, is there a learn meeting, I think after our last meeting?
Yes. Couple of things to note. One is Wyla is being created. Wyla is a pattern of language integration for literacy and academics. What Learn is developing is, I think it could be a more effective education model for non-English speaking students to more, to earlier in their experience to get better language acquisition. And it's connected to the academics of, the academic language that is used in teaching learning. And the director of professional development, Learn and staff are building their own model for this. And down the road, we think, once this pans out and Learn's having a lot of success in their own schools, they may be in a position to give the offer of training in this early language facility. The other fitting note, of course, is, Learn courses building a brand new building for early childhood education. And that's some $90 million project requires access to funds that have been approved. But we need to borrow money to try and do distribution of, so we, remember, Learn has no tax base, everything's based on the fees, the money they accrue, or think they're going to accrue in their current budget. That's not going to happen as fast as the money they need to spend. Basically, they've achieved, they've got state approval on, chief, that's the state of Connecticut's, Connecticut's health and education funding source, that we get bonding through the state because we don't have any property tax base.
That's right, yeah.
It's why they have to go that route. Those two things seem to be undergirded.
Okay. Scott, is that Wyla computer-based or is it, is it computer-based, the Wyla?
No, no, I, I, well, it's all, I don't know how much that student's involved. We just had the first presentation, highlights, and we didn't have a lot of that getting detailed. But it's currently highly individualized. You know, one kid's in a whole bunch, and other kids come from somewhere else. But they think they've got a design, they only get success with multilingual students, especially early in the process of, you know, before they ever get to middle school, maybe high school, more passing English quicker, especially in the academics demands.
Thank you. And did I miss any committees? I don't think so. Okay. So then moving on to new business, we only have one item, is that policy that Anna mentioned earlier regarding administration of medication, and the changes are specifically related to the EpiPen. Any reference to that, also including the nasal spray? And just particularly for the new members, the policy is for policies to have a first read, and then at the next meeting have a second read in which it's voted on. If there's a policy that people feel maybe doesn't really require two meetings to approve because it's simple changes like this, somebody can make a motion to waive the second read and approve the policy. I move that we waive the second reading and vote. All right, thank you. I further move that we approve the new language around EpiPens and the like. Do I have to read it? No, you. You moved to approve the policy, so you're good.
Let's move to.
And, thank you, Cheryl, for the second. On that, is there any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, and that carries? Thank you. Do not have any other business. I should have this down. We do have an executive session planned regarding the student district matter. I think at this time we will move into executive session regarding student district.
I'll take the chance to move into executive session and invite the superintendent.
Thank you. Susan, and thank you, Scott. With that, we're in executive session. Thank you, everyone.
Aye.
No, I don't think we need to.